Good afternoon and welcome to City Council Meeting of Monday, July 8th, 2024. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the meeting room in the northwest corner. We will all begin with a rising for the Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, we'll observe a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The order of business for the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on that item must first register and sign in at the table at the located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself and include an address and the name of an organization you represent unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Anyone wishing to speak on that item should come forward after the clerk reads the item, and then the applicant may make a short rebuttal. Speakers should be letting us know if they speak in favor or in opposition. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Monday of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. And will the clerk please call the first item of business? But I know that we also have a fantastic first item. Mayor, please.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Washington and members of the council. It is truly a pleasure to be with you today to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence for April 2024 to Zach Hawley, who is from our Parks and Recreation Department's Public Gardens Division. Zach was nominating nominated by his Parks and Rec colleagues Jeff Boole, Jeff Dell, Mike Fallon, Dana Green, Sophia Longoria, Cindy Paling, Emma Sorensen, and Brian Zikman in the categories of safety, productivity, loss prevention, and customer relations, which is nearly a clean sweep of all the categories for which he can be nominated for his work as a supervisor and a volunteer coordinator for our city's public gardens. One of the nominating team members, and I'm calling them the nominating team, there are so many, Parks and Rec Horticulturalist Mike Fallon noted how Zach's ability to "inspire and motivate staff, volunteers, and community members" has been instrumental in achieving and maintaining the high standards of excellence that define the Sunken Gardens. Dana Green, a seasonal parks laborer, said that Zach trusts the team to problem solve and use their skills to "better the gardens we love and care for." And in her nomination letter, Parks Public Gardens Volunteer Coordinator Cindy Paling pointed to Zach's other attributes as a supervisor, noting that his consistency is among his many significant excellent qualities. Acknowledging the physical demands of their job, seasonal parks laborer Jeff Boole said that Zach is "very attentive to the safety of his employees at all times." And Brian Zikman, another seasonal parks laborer, said that he saw Zach's leadership abilities even before Zach became his supervisor, as he wrote, "It was clear to me that he had the skills, knowledge, and temperament to be an excellent supervisor, and I am glad to say I was not wrong in that assessment." Unquote. Parks laborer too Sophia Longoria praised Zach's ability to organize and communicate with his team. She said he sets daily goals for the team and encourages them to use their best judgment on how to accomplish the most that they can. Former Parks Laborer Emma Sorensen noted that Zach is particularly well-suited for the public interactions that happen within our parks, and she wrote, "Zach approaches the public with enthusiasm and the knowledge to answer all questions that parkgoers have about our gardens." And finally, Parks and Rec Gardener Jeff Dell spoke for the team when he stated that, "Zach is one of the best individuals I've ever worked with. I come to work motivated, curious, and grateful." Well, thanks to people like Zach, our public gardens do help grow the great life for all of our community members, and we're so grateful to him for for that and for making it so at Sunken Gardens and other places. So we hope you will please join me in congratulating Zach Hawley for his leadership and dedication to our public gardens team and to our wonderful public gardens all across our community as they so capably cultivate them. And with that, I'd like to invite up our Parks and Rec -- well, here, let's make sure he gets his award first. Come on up here. And our Parks and Rec Director Maggie Stuckey-Russ is going to share a few words as well.
Good afternoon. Congratulations to Zach. It's so awesome to look out and see so many members of our team and members of Zach's family, so thank you all for being here, too. I am so proud to have Zach on our team. His career with us started in 2008, am I right? In college, he was an intern and a seasonal laborer, and his full-time career began in 2016. He is an indispensable part of our of our team beyond his personal, excuse me, his professional achievements. Zach embodies integrity and compassion in all that he does. He cares for the garden, he cares for his colleagues, and he fosters an environment where everyone thrives. This award really is a testament to all that Zach has brought over his many years with Parks and Rec. We're really proud of him and proud of the team. I'd like to invite his supervisor Sean Quinn to come up and say a few words as well.
No, thank you. I don't think I could top either one of those, so I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate working with with Zach and his leadership that he provides for his staff and his relationship with the community. The gardens are very special to a lot of people, and I've gotten to know that as well. So I think that his staff said it the best through all those things, what kind of supervisor and employee he is, so thank you, Zach.
All right. Zach, we'd love to have you say a few words as well.
Thank you to Mayor Mayor Larian, the City Council, and Maggie and Sean for this award. It is an honor to receive such an award. To the public gardens section, thank you for the kind and thoughtful words in your nomination letters. When Maggie presented them to me, I was overwhelmed with emotion reading through them. So I'm glad we're at this point now and not reading them now. I appreciate the continuous hard work and collaborative effort you all put on on a you all put in on a daily basis to bring the gardens to the city of Lincoln. We are a very small team that accomplishes accomplishes so much. With that being said, a much deserved shout-out is also in order for the public gardens volunteers as well. We couldn't do it without the volunteer program and what they bring to the gardens. Lastly, thank you to my family for all the support you provide you provide throughout this journey, so thank you.
Would you like to point out your family?
So today here, my wife Jackie, my daughter Emmy, my son Kayden, mother-in-law Bonnie, father-in-law Junior, my dad Kevin, my mom Carol, and my sister Courtney are all here. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Well, Mr. Haley, let me say thank you for all of us on City Council. I think we all have an opportunity and to glorify in how wonderful these gardens are. Love the Sunken Gardens and love all the garden spaces that you've created all over town that makes all of us go, oh, I love living in Lincoln. So thank you for making it beautiful. Thank you. We'll give everyone just a minute to -- wow, he brought a full house.
No kidding.
It's always nice to have something beautiful to look at. All right. Madam Clerk, let us proceed.
Next on our agenda for today is our consent agenda, Sections 1, Sections 2, and 3.
All right. Anyone wishing to address an item on the consent agenda may do so at this time. Is there anyone here to address an item on the consent agenda? Items 1, A through G, 2A, and B. All right, seeing none, we can take a vote.
I'll call item 1A, Approving a Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 1 for Preliminary Engineering Services between the City of Lincoln and Felsburg-Holtin-Ullvig for Randolph Street, Capital Parkway to 40th Street Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second Weber. Take the vote.
Beccius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1B is Approving a Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 1 for Environmental Services between the City of Lincoln and Felsburg-Holtin-Ullvig for Randolph Street, Capital Parkway to 40th Street Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Beccius.
So moved.
Second.
Second Weber. Any discussion? Let's take a vote.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beccius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1C is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending May 31st, 2024, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second Weber. Any discussion? All right, seeing none.
Duden.
Yes.
Beccius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 1D is Approving the Distribution of Funds Representing Interest Earnings on Short-Term Investments of Idle Funds During the Month Ended May 31st, 2024, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second Beccius. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Duden.
Yes.
Beccius.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
I think that concludes one of that section.
Next, oh, excuse me. Section 4 is Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. Item 4A is Application of Kincaid Brewing Company LLC Through Business as Beer House Master for Special Designated License to Cover an Outdoor Area Measuring Approximately 75 Feet by 85 Feet at 151 North 8th Street on July 27th, 2024 from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak on item 4A? Well, good afternoon.
Hello. Do I have to sign in?
Yes, please, and say your name and address.
You can state your name and address.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get the sign in later.
My name is Luke Peterson. That's L-U-K-E-P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N. Address is 2520 R Street, and I am here today on behalf of myself. I'm not here representing anyone or any organization that I may or may not belong to. So I am here to urge the City Council to reject this application. And this might not come to a surprise to some. I've spoken to some people before about this topic, not the newer members who were just recently elected, but the reason why I ask you to reject this is the owner-operator of Kincaid Brew Company does not believe in inclusivity and welcoming and opening affirming spaces. Mr. Schmick had participated, sorry, I'm going off of notes here, had participated in the Nebraska Family Alliance referendum to place the fairness ordinance on the ballot via petition. He had multiple signatures, and I believe he even had people sign at his establishments. In the community, we know him as a raging homophobe. He would rather have you kick rocks and eat dirt than to use his restroom. That might not be enough grounds to reject an application such as this because, as I understand, it has to be a technical reason for the application, not based on them being raging homophobic. So that's fine. That's the prerogative of the City Council, but I've seen time and time again this City Council be so gracious and generous with his business. You've given him a distillery, you've given him a access to rooftop setting, and he has like three establishments in town, none of which he would willingly serve a gay person or queer person. And I have a problem with that, and if it makes me woke for knowing my self-worth, then I guess I'm a woke mother baddie. So I've also looked at a couple of things here, and I've found out that the City Council or the city has a, oh, let me pull it up here, I'm sorry. It's kind of a how-to-operate a restaurant slash bar, and it's on the city's website. And let me go find it. Responsible Hospitality Council Practical Guide. It is on the city's website, and in the table of contents, there is a title that says, "What is hospitality?" And basically says pretty simple language that, you know, "We're here to make money. We're here to make sure that people have affirming, welcoming spaces," and he goes against it, simple as that. So don't really know how much else to add to the conversation. I know the city attorney is probably going to disagree that you can't, you know, deny something for being the way they are. Has to be a technical term, but you don't have to give him a unanimous vote. You don't have to endorse everything that this man does with a 7-0 vote. So if you know it's going to pass, fine, that's not a problem. Just vote against it if you have a conscience and if you know your self-worth. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Any questions if you want.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Peterson?
You know, I don't know if we've ever heard of any complaints that you're reporting to us.
So I actually have heard of complaints, and I know people, trans loved ones, as I like to say, have gone to the establishment and were denied bathroom access. I have heard that he makes racial slurs against people of color, and I've heard that he is just not a nice person. So I don't know if there's any formal complaints out there, but being in the industry, you do hear things about other bar owners and businesses in town. So I don't operate that way, and I'm sorry that people do.
But you know what happens when people don't complain?
Well, nothing gets done.
No, that it's as if it never happened.
Duly noted.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I certainly hear what you have to say, and this is the first time someone's come before our council to make a formal complaint about someone, about this this establishment and this owner. As you noted, a special designated license for liquor does not hinge on whether or not a person is liked or appreciated or is kind. It is based on whether or not their establishment has met all the qualifications for a special designated license, and we do look back at the record of the bar to determine whether or not they've had liquor violations since they were granted their liquor license. We note on this case that this man has not had a liquor violation, and so there is no technical reason to necessarily turn this down. But Mr. Peterson, I hear what you had to say, and Councilman Duden is correct. If we don't get the formal complaint, Commission on Human Rights would be the place to go, then it is if almost it did not happen. So it would be if you have something you'd like to put on the record, it would be good. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move approval of--
I would have some discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Move the action?
Oh, yeah, my apologies.
Move approval of the liquor--
Yeah. Yeah. Or all a member of ILC make that motion?
Or the second, we'll take a second. We have--
Okay, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Beccius, Mr. Duden, as an ILC member. Would you second that, please?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, let's have discussion.
I do want to have some discussion about this application because I have, you know, this is in my district, I have received complaints in the past about this event when it comes to noise and how that impacts the residents that live in that area, and I really would have appreciated an opportunity to have that conversation with Mr. Schmick on what precautions, if any, he planned on taking. There have been members of the downtown community who have brought this to my attention. I maybe in hindsight should have reached out to him. I was hoping that he would have came and spoken and testified in favor of his application. So I am I am slightly disappointed because I don't feel like I've been able to have that conversation with him, you know, obviously support local business in Lincoln, but when constituents bring up valid points about how the event has been operated in the past, I think it would be useful to have a dialogue with that business owner.
I think I'd like to follow up on that and and ask Investigator Parker, have we received noise complaints on this establishment?
Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street. I have not.
Okay.
Nor have I heard anything from the Health Department, which sometimes it would go through them. I haven't heard anything. What I would say in the future for anybody who does have noise issues or issues such as yours, certainly you can reach out to me. I can point you in the right direction of where you need to go, or if it's a noise issue, point you in the correct direction there as well.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Investigator Parker?
No, not for investigator.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Bowers.
I guess a question for Brody. Would you want to do like a week delay to give him the opportunity to show up to address concerns?
Yeah, and and to make sure that the neighbors in that area have been notified that there will, you know, that there's an event. There, I think at times has been a lack of communication between the event planner and the the residents, and so I would support happily a motion to delay a week to have that conversation.
I could get on board with a week delay, and can I ask one thing out of Mr. Christie?
Yes, please.
Just a, I guess it's not a question, but more of a comment or a follow-up. Would you be willing to follow up with Luke to make sure that he has the information about the Lincoln Human Rights Commission and where folks can make their concerns be heard at through the Human Rights Commission with the city?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a technical question of the SDO Committee or the Event Committee. Is there an event application on this as well? I see the SDO license. Is there? Because I want to know what what does a week's delay look like on this calendar? Does this stop this event from happening with a week's delay? Does it interrupt his ability to contract?
So potentially, yes. The issue that we would run into is the 10-day requirement through the Liquor Commission to submit the SDO. They're right on the cusp. I can certainly make some phone calls to see if they'd be willing to waive it in this circumstance, which is abnormal. I would agree. I cannot give you a definitive that they would do it or not, allow the waiver of the 10-day rule.
It appears that this application, that this event stops at 10:00 p.m.
Right.
I would think that in the Haymarket, 10:00 p.m. as a stopping time, if that's adhered I would think that in the Haymarket, 10:00 p.m. as a stopping time, if that's adhered to, probably isn't very problematic. Is this on a Saturday night?
Correct.
Yeah, Saturday night in the Haymarket, stops at 10:00 p.m. I don't have a concern. If it's going to potentially cause a problem for this gentleman who has held several events in the Haymarket without concern, whether that's this event, whether that's Oktoberfest, what have you.
What I can say without, you know, obviously telling you how to vote, is I can ask for the waiver on behalf of this being kind of extenuating circumstances, and then I don't know if it's possible for the council to potentially try and have him come back next Monday and vote for it now, or, I mean, that's some options potentially. I don't know if that's possible.
Or perhaps a follow-up with ILC the next time ILC meets?
Oh, there you go. Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, I think I also want to understand, I mean, we have, we issue many SDLs and event permits, and I never thought to ask what the protocol is for notifying neighbors for the issuance of an SDO.
Right.
So, I'm not even sure I understand what that is.
My knowledge there isn't.
Okay.
Something written out, set in stone for notification of neighbors. Now, it turns into a special event if it's, you know, they know that it's going to be very loud music. It's very close to residential neighborhood, which obviously down in the Haymarket, you have people living in the apartments, so on and so forth. But then that abuts into the Special Events Committee.
Right. Right, and this is just an SDO, not a special event?
As far as I know.
As far as you know, yeah.
Yes.
I haven't looked, I mean, I saw that the street's going to be barricaded for a block, but it is a Saturday night where the event ends at 10:00 p.m. So, it's a 3 to 10. And it's become our habit to allow SDO, especially repeat SDO applicants, to not necessarily show for these hearings.
Correct.
And so, I think this is also one of those situations where now he's not here, and we have questions.
Right.
This is unusual.
Perhaps something for ILC to consider as well.
I think we're, I see a number of attorneys gathered in the corner, so I'm going to give them a moment, and one of them is coming forward. City Attorney.
Sorry. Wasn't prepared for today's. Tanya Peters, Assistant City Attorney. The new Liquor Commission rule is seven days, so that gives us a little bit more time for That being, that should work out if you want to table it till next Monday for a vote. The other thing I can tell you, on the Special Events Committee, on the permit application, we do have them have sign off from the neighboring businesses, now not the neighboring residences. That may be kind of difficult for an applicant. My memory is on this location, we did have them notify the landlords in prior events. I don't know about this particular one. I wasn't at the Events Committee hearing. As far as I know, we have not received any formal complaints as far as noise. Okay? This one, before, it just kind of was mid-block, took up some parking. We know some other, that's an issue in that area, and so that was part of that notification. But otherwise, so you could table it one week, obviously you could vote on it. We could see if we could get ahold of Mr. Schmick and see if he can get down here by the end of your meeting. That might be a possibility also. Yes.
Are you aware of any complaints on this establishment?
I am not. I'm not. But you are correct. The Commission on Human Rights would be the best avenue for that public accommodation or employment, depending on those issues. Health Department is the best for noise, but obviously people, like LPD, gets those noise complaints also. I'm just not familiar with any complaints.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to table it for one week, and then we have...
I don't think we have yet.
We have the motion to approve. I'm so sorry.
While we're still in discussion, I do just want the record to reflect that, as a city official, I have received complaints and have passed those complaints on to other departments, other individuals about noise, about parking, and that is why I would have appreciated the opportunity to have had just a conversation with Mr. Schmick, and that is why I will be making, I make a motion to delay this one week.
I'll second that.
All right. Second, Bowers?
I have a question.
Yes.
There was a motion on the table to approve. Would we need to withdraw that motion first? No. Okay. Thank you.
We can keep that motion, and so we have a motion to delay one week offered by Councilman Bowers, second, offered by Councilman Weber, seconded by Bowers.
Continued public hearing?
And for continued, yes, for continued public hearing next Monday with continued. All right. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. Let's vote on the motion to delay one week with continued public hearing.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0.
Thank you. All righty. Let's move on to public hearing resolutions. Madam Clerk?
I'll call Item 5A, approving the 2024-25 Work Plan for the Interlocal Agreement on Stormwater Management between the City of Lincoln and Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to address stormwater quality and quantity issues.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Tim Zock, Superintendent of Stormwater with the Watershed Management Division of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, 555 South 10th Street. And I'll let Mike introduce himself.
I'm Mike Soschek, the General Manager of the Lower Platte South NRD. Formerly, he probably worked with Paul Zillig, and I took his position.
The city and the NRD entered into an interlocal agreement in 1996 to cooperate in addressing stormwater quality and quantity issues in the city of Lincoln. Over the last 30 years, the city and the NRD have partnered in watershed master planning, constructing flood control, water quality, and stream stability projects, updating flood plan and stormwater standards, updating flood plan maps, and conducting flood plan and stormwater education. This annual work plan before you today spells out what specific projects and initiatives the city and the NRD will cooperate in this next year, who will be the lead agency for each item, and what the cost share will be. Specific efforts include continuation of our sediment and erosion control program, flood plan and stormwater education, water quality monitoring, designing and construction of stream stability and flood control projects, continuation of flood plan map update, Salt Creek feasibility study, and the Upper Salt Creek study, operation of our flood warning system, and maintenance of our wetland mitigation bank. And with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Do any councilors have questions? Yes. Go ahead.
Superintendent Zock, thank you. Quick question for you. On the dead man's run reduction project that's highlighted in green on the attachment, which I'm not sure you're, are able to reference here very quickly, but can you tell me why it's highlighted in green?
I'm not sure why it's highlighted in green.
Okay. Okay. I'll talk to you later.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hi. Well, that's it. I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
All right. I have more than a couple of questions. You know, I'm really interested in this topic. One, I really appreciate the thoroughness of the work plan, the fact that you addressed so many things that are desperately important for our community and things that we've had conversations about in the last year. And I just want, let's start with the work plan, the final sheet that has the cost share and the responsibility share. And for starters, let's start with zero. So, can you explain what zero means on the work plan? If it means that no work is going to be done, or that the cost of the work is already assumed in some other place?
Many of these items, I think where there's zero, it's not, there isn't specific work identified in this work plan. We like to keep those items in here where there may, something may come up, and we might do that action as kind of a placeholder, but we don't have a specific plan for this year to do those items.
Okay. That is really humbling, because some of the things, I think, that the community was asking for when we were updating the flood, the flood plan standards were regional storage facilities, updating of ordinances and standards, and I was excited to see them really well-defined there, but then I saw that they had $0, so that clarifies that this is important but not being worked on this year. But I do appreciate, you know, where there is some work. I also, I did have the same question that Councilman Becky has had about the coloration of the chart. We'll move past that. And then we had a conversation about updated stormwater best management, MVPs practices, and I was curious to learn a little bit more about that. So, there's the rainscaping piece of it for the demonstration projects, but I'm sort of wondering about the best management practice. Specifically, it says here on rehabilitation. I know we were also talking about BMPs for construction.
And what item number is that you're referring to?
Okay, wait a second. Let me get off of that sheet and go back to actual document. So...
Is that number 13, Watershed Best Management Practices Rehabilitation?
Yes, Watershed Best Management Practices is number 13. Yes.
And so, there's, that one is, there's many projects that we have completed. A lot of these best management practices are water quality projects, and some of them, or many of them, have maintenance needs or kind of a larger maintenance need for those projects. This year, we haven't identified any of those projects that we need to do a larger rehabilitation effort, but that's mainly projects that we have completed in the past and going back and rehabbing them. To speak to the specific discussion we've had on kind of our sediment and erosion control BMPs and improvement of those, that's still in discussion in the works right now and not finalized, so it has not made it into the work plan specifically.
And if it went into the work plan, do you assume that there's a cost associated with developing, even if we were lifting from state regs into erosion BMPs? Would there be a cost associated with doing that?
I don't have a good idea, and I haven't thought about that yet on the cost.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. All right. Seeing no more questions, let's move to the next item.
I'll call Item 5B, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the villages of Sprague, Hallam, Roca, and Raymond. These resolutions are in essence, it's a renewal similar to what we have brought prior in April on four of the other jurisdictions we've been working with. So, this is a renewal of an existing, generally, it's a renewal of an existing interlocal that's been in place for 10 years, and it primarily covers environmental, public health services for the villages, and their ETJ, their extratorior jurisdiction. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? All right. Seeing no questions. Thank you. You had quite a long list.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, Chair Washington?
Yes.
Just for process, may I go ahead and read Item 5C, D, and E together?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 5C, D, and E then would be approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the village of Hallam, Roca, and Raymond for health regulation inspection and enforcement within the corporate limits and one-mile jurisdiction of the villages of Hallam, Roca, and Raymond.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any of these items? Anyone here who'd like to speak on any of these interlocal agreements? All right. Seeing none, we can move ahead.
I'll be calling Item 5F, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for June 1st through June 15th of 2024.
All right. Is there anyone here on the dais who'd like to have a presentation or have any questions? City Attorney, is there anything that you feel needs to be addressed or presented on
I don't think so. I don't know if there's anyone here to testify on claims or not.
All right. We have two items.
Looks like maybe there's somebody.
And is there anyone here to speak on this item?
I'm here to protest like an accident. Okay, so I think he's right.
I'm forward. You are someone who would like to speak on this item? The first time for everyone. Can I just clearly state your name and your address?
Yeah, I'm Nathan Pilikowski. I'm on 701 P Street. I had an accident with a city vehicle on May 11th, and I was just driving through the parking lot. I was right behind a, it was like a Chevy Silverado. It was the fire chief's truck, and he pulled into a parking spot. Sorry. A little nervous.
It's fine. It's fine.
But yeah, so he pulled into a parking spot, and then I kept moving through the lot, and then as I kept moving through, I started hearing up like the backup beeping, and I didn't have time to get out of the way. I tried yelling out my window. He didn't hear me, and he just backed into the front of my car. The only thing I received was a driver exchange on the date. I was waiting there for a while, but a police officer came, just gave me that, and then we went on our way. They expected communication within two weeks. We didn't get anything until a couple days into June. It was basically just a letter. We didn't receive any accident report. There was a letter from the city just saying they didn't think the city vehicle was liable for the accident at all, but, I mean, it's, so it was $4,100 worth of damages on my car. My car's only valued at $7,000, so it's not like, it's still minorly drivable, but I actually, like, my parents are from Lawrence, Kansas. I'm a student here. We haven't felt comfortable driving my car to and from Lawrence. It's three hours. So, we really wanted this process to go quick. When me and my mom talked to the city, they basically said, "It's the city, so it's not really going to be very quick." But, yeah, basically, they said, "Just come here, say your claim, see if we can do anything about it." But, yeah, they just, they weren't like super straightforward about it. They just said, "Bring everything you can." I sent an email to Mr. Duden. Just had my driver report. He asked for the accident report, but I didn't have that, so it was just the driver exchange, my version of events, the estimate information, and then just a Kelley Blue Book estimate on my car.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward. Let's have some conversation and see if we can hear from some other folks. Mr. Duden?
Got a question. Did you follow this city vehicle into the parking lot?
So, he was going through the parking lot, and then I was leaving. We were at the Casey's that's off Q, or P Street, and, yeah, he was just going through the lot. I was right behind him. He pulls into a spot, and then I believed he came to a complete stop, so I kept going, and then after I was, my car started moving. I started hearing the backup beeps, and then by the time that I, like, I just didn't have enough time to get out of the way of the car. I tried yelling, but, I mean, that didn't really do anything.
How many people were in the city vehicle?
It was just him. It was not the fire chief. It was the interim fire chief. I just, his name is written on the driver exchange, but I don't know it off the top of my head, but, yeah, I just, I don't think there was practically any damage on his car, but I drive a Volkswagen Passat, so basically shattered the grille, front hood, front bumper. They're all kind of jacked up.
Any other questions?
I think that's it.
Is there anyone else you want to speak with?
Yeah, like the city.
Um, I just, his name is written on the driver exchange, but I don't know it off the top of my head. But, yeah, I just, I don't think there was practically any damage on his car, but I drive a Volkswagen Passat, so basically shattered the grille, front hood, front bumper, they're all like kinda jacked up.
Any other questions?
I think that's, that's it.
Is there anyone else you want to speak with?
Uh, yeah, I'd like the, the city to come up. I think you should display this accident report.
City Attorney.
City Attorney.
Lily Lee, Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street.
Could you display the diagram?
From the accident report?
Yes. And, okay, this would be between 17th and 16th.
Mm-hmm. At that Casey's parking lot, yeah. Right across from that east stop.
Um, so it kinda looks like these vehicles are oversized for the picture that we have here.
Yeah, I'd assume so. I mean, one of them was a, I mean, it was like a massive truck.
So when, when you say the city vehicle pulled into a parking stall, is that true? He's going forward?
Yes, so he was, he was pulling into a parking spot and then stopped, and then he was planning on backing into a parking spot across the parking lot. So, like, at the time, I had no idea that that was the case. He pulled fully into the spot, so I just kept going through the parking lot. And then I started hearing up the backup signs, couldn't move my car out of the way. I was at a complete stop, um, and he just backed into my car.
I think that changes my opinion again, so.
Okay, any other questions?
It's, it's my, from my law enforcement experience and my, my impression of accidents, when you're backing up and someone stopped behind you and you run into them, you're basically at fault.
Yeah, that's what, we talked to, um, like, one of our attorneys and they basically said the same thing, that it was just negligence on his part, he didn't know that I was behind him.
Yeah. It's, you know, th- th- these are things that happen, but, uh, I think since you were stopped and he had actually pulled into a stall and then was gonna make a change and back into a stall across the opposite side from the parking stall, I think that changes my opinion on this, so.
Um, Councilman Beckyus and then Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you walk me through the denial from city law?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, we received this claim from the Pilikowskis, um, and I received a city of Lincoln vehicle accident report, which would be the driver, it's a captain, he was driving in a battalion chief vehicle, so it is a Silverado 1500, so it's a truck, not an ambulance, not a fire truck. Um, and his account of the accident is that he was backing into the stall. Mr. Pilikowski came out of his stall and then started moving towards the city of Lincoln vehicle, came in contact with the rear end of his vehicle. I also reviewed the accident report, the diagram is, um, here, and the accident report, I'll just read you the description. Driver one stated he was backing into a parking stall when he was struck by vehicle two. Driver two stated he was pulling out of his parking stall and going around the building. Driver two stated that he did not realize vehicle one was backing up as he was turning around the corner until he heard the backup beeping noise from vehicle one. Driver two stated he believed he was in vehicle one's blind spot, but he attempted to reverse and avoid the collision, and that vehicle one backed into him at that time. And I will just note, neither driver was cited.
So the concept being is that, um, that the pickup truck was being overtaken at that point in time, uh, being passed, if you will, in the drive aisle?
Through the parking spot, correct.
Okay, and so were you in the drive aisle?
So, wait, the drive aisle? Would that mean like in the?
Not in the parking spaces?
Yes, I was definitely in, I was, I'd already, he was going through the parking lot and then I backed out of my spot. I continued to go through the drive aisle and then he pulled into a spot and then I had kept going through the drive aisle and then he backed into me, essentially.
Um, thank you Chair. Thank you Chair Washington. So I have two questions for the Assistant City Attorney. One of them is, so you said no driver was cited from this incident. Is that typical, wh- wh- I guess, when is it typical that neither driver in an accident is cited for an incident?
Um, I don't cite people for driving, so that's probably a better question for LPD, but I will say, um, when city law analyzes claims, whether a driver was cited or not and for what they were cited is something that comes into my analysis.
Okay, thank you. And actually, that analysis is kinda the, the next thing I wanna get into. You had mentioned kinda the, the factual background of how we ended up here. Can you explain to me what the rationale was after doing your analysis of why to, why this claim needed to be denied, or why city law denied it?
Absolutely. So city law can only, um, recommend approval of a claim if there is clear negligence on the part of the city or a city employee. Um, in my analysis of this claim, I don't think that there is clear negligence on the part of the driver of the battalion one vehicle. I think he was backing into a parking stall, just as anyone would back into a parking stall. I think Mr. Pilikowski was turning left into that portion of the gas station parking lot and the vehicles collided. I do not think that there was negligence on either party as far as the information that I have.
That's, that's very helpful information. Um, and then my last question is, since the claimant is from Lawrence, Kansas, can you explain kinda procedurally, procedure wise, where we're at in this process? Like, if this is the first step, if this is the last step, um, kinda where we're at?
Sure, so this is the middle probably step of, um, his process, so, um, our office reviews the claim, we make a, a recommendation to city council. City council will either approve my recommendation or deny my recommendation, and then at that time, Mr. Pilikowski has options at the civil action level if he chooses.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all my questions, Madam Chair.
I've got one more question.
You have one more question? And then I think I have, we'll have that question.
Isn't it true that the police department does not take any enforcement action on private property?
That's correct.
Point that out.
Okay, so, that's a good point. So, uh, this was in the parking lot of Casey's?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So, um, did you have a passenger?
I did not, no.
You didn't have a passenger, okay. So you're, if you wouldn't mind putting the, uh, Ms. Lily, Ely, sorry, could you put the diagram back? Because I'm trying to understand, um, where, where was your parking space?
So I was parked right there. Then I just left, I just got like a Gatorade and a piece of pizza and just pulled out of my parking spot. He was, I was following him through the parking lot. He pulled into the spot right there and then as I was, I was still in the driver lane and then he starts backing up as I'm continuing through the parking lot and then collided with me.
Um, from this diagram, I really can't see that you're in the driver's lane, it, because I think there are parking spaces on both sides?
Hmm, I was a little bit further down than I believe in this, but, I mean.
Yes, so I, I don't really see the parking spaces, so I'm like, I've, I've been there, so I know that there's parking on both sides, I know all the way around the building. And so I can't really see who, you know, and I can't see if that was a median that blocked you from turning the corner to the left?
Yeah, so, well, I was just, um, I was in a spot right there. There's no parking spots, spots on this side.
Right.
So I'd assume that anything from these parking spots underneath those trees to the actual Casey store is considered part of the parking, or the driving lane.
But there are parking spaces along the front of the building?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so there's both, okay.
Hope so, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, do you need anything else here?
Uh, I don't have any other questions. Anyone else?
All right.
May I take a seat? And we will, uh, we may discuss this more, but when we get to the voting session, you'll hear. All right, um, do any of the counselors have questions for anyone else? Uh, the city attorney or, uh, anyone else, staff wise?
Madam Chair, there's no signs allowed in the council chambers?
Um, there are no signs, you are correct, allowed in the council chambers. I was gonna finish my thought and then see if this sign was going to be used as a demonstration object during their testimony, or whether or not it was going to be used as a protest behind some other business. But let us, um, the notes have already been given, um, and let's move on on this item. Hearing nothing else on this item, I think we can move forward to item 5G.
Item 5G is approving the interlocal corporation agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and Lancaster County, on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to create a joint training academy.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Ryan Dale, Assistant Chief, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th Street. LPD hosts, um, our own police academy. We have two academy classes per year. Um, and historically, um, all of our recruits, except for a few year time period, have gone through our own academy rather than going to the state academy. There was also a period of several years where we hosted UNL officers, um, in our academy, but currently it's only LPD officers. We were approached by the sheriff's office, um, probably close to a year ago, to start discussions about, um, then, them sending their new deputies through our academy as well. Um, as you're aware, um, there's a law enforcement staffing shortage, um, across our state and even across the nation. Um, the state academy limits an individual agency to two recruits per academy. So the larger, um, agencies as far as across the state are concerned go, if they fall behind in staffing more than two people, it makes it literally impossible to catch up. And that's a situation that the sheriff's office has found themselves in. Um, so they, uh, had interest in collaborating with us on our academy. Um, so we worked through, um, through numerous meetings and discussions to develop this interlocal agreement. Um, it has already been approved by the county board. Um, but, um, I won't highlight everything, but in short, it, uh, doesn't change any of LPD's academy curriculum. LSO employees will learn all LPD policies and procedures, um, nothing will change as far as that goes. It also doesn't add any cost to the department or the city at large. And in fact, there could be some minimal cost savings, uh, because of sharing costs with the sheriff's office if we have to lease any training facilities or, um, pay for any outside instructors or anything like that. Um, so we feel this is kind of a win-win situation. Uh, we already share facilities with the sheriff's office, um, we, um, share a lot of different types of investigations where we collaborate with each other, and I think this just, uh, builds on that, uh, partnership. Um, but I'd be happy to take any questions. I also have Sergeant Noonan here, who's our academy director, and Captain McGuire, who's, um, the captain of our, um, education and personnel unit.
Thank you, AC Dale. Uh, any questions or comments? Um, we'll start with Councilman Duden and then, uh, Councilman Beckyus.
Ryan, I think this is just an excellent, uh, idea, probably should've been done a long time ago type of thing. Uh, the academy, uh, I taught in it myself, umpteen years ago, and, uh, I think anybody would benefit from, uh, LPD's academy, no matter where they end up working. Uh, but I think this will help be a magnet for the department and for the sheriff's office. So, yes, it is a win-win situation for the citizens of Lincoln and the residents of Lancaster County, so, um, I think it's a good move on, uh, departments and the sheriff's office's position, so, good job.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Beckyus.
Yes, thank you, AC Dale, appreciate it. Um, part of the agreement, and you, you mentioned it, said that there was no exchange of compensation for this, but the city's responsible for operating the academy, at which LSO will be attending the academy. Can you walk me through that agreement a little bit so I can understand, or, or folks can understand, uh, the trade-off of, of LPD running an academy that LSO isn't paying for?
Sure. Um, as far as like how the city, or how the LPD benefits from it in exchange for how LSO benefits for it. So LSO, um, their benefit is, um, obvious, they can get more people hired at a time. Um, they don't have to send their recruits to Grand Island, um, for the academy. They have better oversight of their employees because they're right here in Lincoln, um, so on and so forth. Um, LPD's, uh, benefit is more, um, I guess I would say big picture from a collaboration standpoint, standpoint, building relationships that would pay dividends down the road. Um, we would also have, um, support from LSO to provide role players for any hands-on type scenario-based training, um, and also like assistant, uh, instructors, for instance, uh, like, uh, emergency vehicle operations course, or firearms, or defensive tactics, those are very instructor-intensive, and we need a lot of instructors there, which can be burdens, burdensome on our staffing. And they can help, um, supply instructors to fill those needs, um, so we don't have to take as many people off the street, um, from their normal assignments to help with that.
So it would be beneficial and helping actually run the academy?
Yes.
Um, and then also, uh, we would be looking at the, the fact that you're running the academy anyway, and so really folding people in is not burdensome to the department, to the academy trainers themselves, so on and so forth?
Correct. Now, logistically, they're, um, adding more people naturally, you have more people to supervise, you make more copies, things like that. Uh, again, they're helping, uh, they'll provide all their own equipment, things like that, so it doesn't add cost to us, but naturally, uh, for Sergeant Noonan more than anyone as he, um, it's just a few more people per class for him to supervise, um, but it's work that he's doing anyways.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Um, any other questions? Just for the record, I'll note that I did ask a question before we got into the meeting, wanting to know if it changed any of the curriculum by having, uh, LSO, uh, recruits in our academy. Uh, and you can answer that for the record, or I can?
It, it does not change any of the curriculum, um, it remains as is. Uh, they will, LSO employees will learn LPD policies, procedures, and they'll be tested on that, uh, just the same as we are testing our own employees right now. Um, and then they'll do some supplemental training after the academy to teach specific things to their agency, which is the same thing they've been doing when their recruits come back from the state academy.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah, you're gonna have full academy classes, or more full academy classes, and that interaction is usually a very positive thing. You have, uh, you know, I love seeing recruits graduate, and we had a great, small class this last time, but having more, um, students in the class is a good thing, and, uh, I appreciate the interlocal agreement. It makes it possible to, um, move our LPD values out as far as we possibly can.
Thank you. And I should clarify that, um, the Police Standards Advisory Council, which is, falls under the Crime Commission, um, this does comply with all their requirements, and in order for the sheriff's office to be part of our academy, we had to have an interlocal agreement, um, which is part of what sparked this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone here to speak on this item, either in opposition or in favor, this interlocal agreement? Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Madam Clerk, move us forward. Forward.
I'll call item 5H, approving the interlocal corporation agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and the state of Nebraska, on behalf of the Nebraska State Patrol to provide tactical flight officer support.
And who's here to present on this item? Is there some straw?
I'm sorry, I wasn't giving a heads up about this one. Tanya's gonna come help me, help me.
Very good.
Yeah, it just looks like you pulled the short straw, but, all right.
I think he did. My apologies. We are so focused on the academy and preparing for Ryan's first testimony before council, I forgot that we put this on at the same time. Um, LPD has been, um, assisting the Nebraska State Patrol, um, by providing officers, um, to fly in both the plane and the helicopters. And so this is just moving that agreement forward. It, it just got a little, got a little delayed coming forward, um, so we're just, just It, it just got a little, got a little delayed coming forward, um, so we're just, just finalizing that agreement. Um, I think that the community has been really receptive, and we've seen good outcomes from that. Um, I think staff are really enjoying this opportunity. LPD had planned on it being a recruiting tool, so hopefully that's just one more, um, if anybody has interest in flying, an opportunity for them to, to join the police department. And again, my apologies for not, uh, notifying Assistant Chief Dale.
We have seen, uh, numerous successes, um, by having staff, um, in the air, um, like apprehending, um, stolen car, locating stolen cars and apprehending suspects safely, things like that, that, um, allow us to track someone without, uh, track's a bad word, but monitor someone until they land in a parked location, rather than engaging in a vehicle pursuit or something that would be, uh, a higher risk. Um, so we've seen a lot of benefit from it.
Are there any questions from councilors?
You gonna start painting numbers on the roofs of the cruisers, pretty soon?
We already have.
Oh, okay, good.
We actually did that at NSP's request, um, a number of years ago.
Oh, very good, very good.
I think at the same time that we switched to the current decals on the cruisers.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, and, um, there's been a number of times that it's been helpful over the years, and NSP has always been willing to put a plane or a chopper in the air, um, when requested, and so they've been a good community partner, and, um, so we'll just continue, um, with this program if you approve it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, A.C. Dale?
Yes.
One, one other, sorry, I apologize. Um, I noticed that, you know, obviously officers are assigned to the special duty, but I don't see anything in the agreement regarding council members being assigned to fly. And I know that Tom Duden really wants to, so I just wanted to throw that out.
I'd go.
We're first gonna hang you upside down, and we'll just see how you do.
How we do there?
And then we might, we'll amend the agreement after that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're, you go ahead. All right. Uh, is there anyone here to speak on this item? Anyone here to speak on this item? Then we will move forward. Madam Clerk.
I'll call items five I and J together. Items five I and J is approving the professional services agreement supplement number four for preliminary engineering services between the city of Lincoln and JEO Consulting Group, Inc., for the Beale Slough Trail project. And the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District, and city of Lincoln for the construction of the undercrossing of the OPPD Bridge number fifty-four twenty-nine along the Beale Slough Trail.
Madam Clerk, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be before you this afternoon. My name is Allison Spiker. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Team as the Trails and Natural Resources Coordinator, and the next two agenda items are both related to a railroad crossing on the Beale Slough Trail project. The Beale Slough Trail is a two-point-two-mile trail extension of our trail network in the southeast quadrant of Lincoln. Um, it is a federal aid project with eighty percent of the funds coming from a, um, Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and the twenty percent being from local funds. The first item, five I, is a supplement to JEO's professional services contract for the engineering of the Beale Slough Trail. The supplement covers design services related to the trail undercrossing at an active OPPD-owned railroad bridge north of Bridle Lane and west of Seventieth Street. Additional design evaluations and technical evaluations are needed to be able to comply with railroad requirements for the trail undercrossing. So that supplement is, uh, in total, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five, um, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, which would be divided eighty-twenty per the grant agreement. The second item is an interlocal agreement between, or item five J, the second item, is but, an interlocal agreement between the city and the Railroad Transportation Safety District, or RTSD, in which the RTSD provides funding support for the trail project up to two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars, um, specifically for that railroad crossing. Um, it is a grade-separated crossing, which means the trail will go under the railroad bridge, um, and so there are a lot of technical requirements, both for design and construction, needed to make that crossing happen. Um, the RTSD has provided funding support for other trail projects where there are separated crossings, as it's a safety improvement to move pedestrians and bicyclists, um, not at grade, or not, um, at the level of the railroad tracks, and so we are extremely grateful to be able to have funding support for this project to deal with the complications that come from working on railroad right-of-way. So that's up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We, um, that's an estimate of what those costs would be, and the RTSD would be, um, reimbursing for actual costs once design and construction is complete.
All right. Um, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Um, I would note that this has been a long time coming. There are a lot of trail users on the Beale Slough who have hoped and prayed for this to happen, so I'm glad to see this project moving forward. I'd also note that it was also a, a very important project for former Councilman Richard McGinnis. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this project? Either in favor or in opposition? Will take, uh, comment on both items, five I and five J. Seeing no one coming forward, madam clerk, we can move ahead.
I'll call item five K. Item five K is assessing the cost incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at eight twenty-six H Street, thirty-three seventeen North Fifty-first Street, and assessing the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at thirty-eight oh-one South Thirty-seventh Street, eight twenty-four B Street, twenty-nine oh-two North Forty-first Street, seventy-three hundred Briarhurst Drive, nineteen thirty-four F Street, fourteen twenty-five South Sixteenth Street, eight thirty-five North Thirtieth Street, fifty-seven twenty-seven Sailor, twenty-two oh-one North Fifty-sixth Street, three thousand one Q Street, and assessing the cost incurred by the city for property cleanup and boardings on property located at thirty-eight oh-one South Thirty-seventh Street, fifty-seven twenty-seven Sailor, eight thirty-five North Thirtieth Street, fifteen eleven South Second Street, and seventy-three hundred Briarhurst Drive.
All right. Uh, is there anyone to present on this? Are there any questions or comments from councilors? Um, I have noted that we have a motion to amend, to correct. Oh, right, on the voting session, pardon me, trying to be super efficient today. All right. Um, if there's no comments and questions, and no one to present, we will move forward to the voting session. Madam Clerk.
I'll call item five A, approving the twenty-twenty-four-twenty-five work plan for the interlocal agreement on storm water management between the city of Lincoln and Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to address storm water quality and quantity issues. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden. Uh, any discussion? All right. Let's take a vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five B is approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the village of Sprague for the health regulation inspection and enforcement within the corporate limits and one-mile jurisdiction of the village of Sprague. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second, Duden. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five C is approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the village of Hallam for health regulation, inspection, and enforcement within the corporate limits and one-mile jurisdiction of the village of Hallam. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? Let's vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five D is approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the village of Roca for health regulation inspection and enforcement within the corporate limits and, and one-mile jurisdiction of the village of Roca. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Duden, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five E is approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and the village of Raymond for health regulation, inspection, and enforcement within the corporate limits and one-mile jurisdiction of the village of Raymond. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? Seeing none.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Next item.
Item five F is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for June first through June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-four. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, any discussion?
Yeah, um...
And Weber?
Thank you, Chair Washington. Um, I wanna just say I appreciate, uh, the claimant coming down today, um, and informing the council of, of his experience. Um, I do plan on voting to accept, uh, the report from, uh, city law. Uh, I think the assistant city attorney did a really, um, well, or a really good job laying out that the standard for us to accept, um, a claim is that there must be clear negligence, and that that was not, um, proved in this instance, and that there are still options that remain for the claimant, um, that would be through the judicial process instead of a political process. Um, and I think that that would be a more appropriate forum, and so for that reason, I will be voting to accept the, the claims report in its entirety.
Anyone else?
I'll be voting no, 'cause I, I don't feel, uh, that, uh, the accident report is, uh, accurate, and, uh, the diagram, I don't think really depicts what, what took place, and I don't think the verbiage in the accident report reflects the same, so, um, it's my contention that when you're backing up, you've gotta make sure it's, everything's clear, and if something's stopped behind you, you've gotta stop short of that, otherwise, uh, you're responsible for the damage, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Madam, please call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried four to one. Item five G is approving the interlocal corporation agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and Lancaster County, on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to create a joint training academy. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? Yes.
Um, I am looking forward to the creation of, uh, this, uh, joint training academy, and, uh, I think it simply shows our community's ability to, uh, to cooperate with other agencies as we move towards common goals.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five H is approving the interlocal corporation agreement between the city of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Police Department and the state of Nebraska, on behalf of the Nebraska State Patrol to provide tactical flight officer support. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, uh, anyone comment? Discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five I is approving the professional services agreement supplement number four for preliminary engineering services between the city of Lincoln and JEO Consulting Group, Inc., for the Beale Slough Trail project. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, comments, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five J is approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Lincoln, Lancaster County Railroad Transportation Safety District, and city of Lincoln for the construction of undercrossing of the OPPD Bridge number fifty-four twenty-nine along the Beale Slough Trail. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item five K is assessing the cost incurred by the city for building demolition on property located at eight twenty-six H Street, thirty-three seventeen North Fifty-first Street, and assessing the fees and penalties for neglected buildings on property located at thirty-eight oh-one South Thirty-seventh Street, eight twenty-four B Street, twenty-nine oh-two North Forty-first Street, seventy-three hundred Briarhurst Drive, nineteen thirty-four F Street, fourteen twenty-five South Sixteenth Street, eight thirty-five North Thirtieth Street, fifty-seven twenty-seven Sailor, twenty-two oh-one North Fifty-sixth Street, three thousand one Q Street, and assessing the cost incurred by the city for property cleanup and boardings on property located at thirty-eight oh-one South Thirty-seventh Street, fifty-seven twenty-seven Sailor, eight thirty-five North Thirtieth Street, fifteen eleven South Second Street, and seventy-three hundred Briarhurst Drive. Introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Bowers? Um, I was, yes, Councilman Bowers?
Uh, I just have a motion, um, to, uh, amend this, uh, this piece of legislation with a substitute attachment A to update the paid properties on the list.
I, I would second that amendment, or that motion to amend.
All right. Thank you, uh, Weber, on the second there. So he seconded the original and the amendment. Um, which items, um, were added to the paid list? So it looks like, uh, the, okay, in red, so fifty-seven twenty-seven Sailor has been paid, so that is removed from this list. Thank you. All right. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, um, on the, on the motion to amend number one.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Okay, on the main motion.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing ordinances. Madam Clerk.
I'll call item six A. Item six A is approving the lease agreement between the city of Lincoln and the Lamar Company LLC for the lease of billboard spaced near the intersection of South Street and Winthrop Road.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Denise Pierce, that's P-E-A-R-C-E, also with the Lincoln Parks and Rec Department. We are well represented at your council meeting today. Our address is thirty-one thirty-one O Street, Suite three hundred. Um, for this item, we are going to be talking about a billboard that's been in place for quite a while. Uh, you've probably driven by it more than a couple of times, and it's located at the intersection here of Winthrop Road, which is right here, and then South Street, which Um, for this item, we are going to be talking about a billboard that's been in place for quite a while. Uh, you've probably driven by it more than a couple of times, and it's located at the intersection here of Winthrop Road, which is right here, and then South Street, which is right here. And you can see on the G I S map right here, the billboard. And just for a little bit of context, if you keep going east on South Street here, you're gonna run into Memorial Drive that goes into Antelope Park. A little bit further, you'll get to Thirty-third Street. So for many years, uh, that billboard agreement between the city and Lamar was managed by a third-party administrator. And that administrator in turn took a cut of the revenues. Uh, we figured this out recently, uh, and working with City Law and the real estate division decided that we really didn't need a third-party administrator uh in there. And so we negotiated with Lamar directly on the agreement that you have in front of you today. Uh, earlier this year, if this agreement looks familiar, it's because it is. Earlier this year, you approved a substantially similar agreement for a Lamar billboard. It was at Twenty-fifth and Randolph or just off of Twenty-fifth at Randolph. And again, the the provisions in front of you today are nearly identical to those provisions uh in the agreement approved earlier this year. We worked again with City Law and the real estate uh team on this agreement in front of you. Uh, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. On page one there, paragraph two, the term of this agreement is ten years, starting on May first, two opportunities to renew for five additional two-year terms, or excuse me, two additional five-year terms for a total of twenty. Um, and then on the second page there, you'll see the rental provision, uh, based on comparable signs. Uh, we negotiated the rate of seventeen fifty annually. That's the base rate, or twenty percent of the gross revenues, whichever is greater. And that base rate then increases three percent annually. And then throughout the agreement, you will see all of those typical standard uh contract provisions that City Law wants us to include in agreements. I just wanna note our appreciation to Lamar for working through these agreements with us over the course of the last year. I would note that we have Carrie uh Wayne Brown with us today from Lamar. Uh, this is Lamar's real estate manager. She's here this afternoon. In case there's any questions, she can help me answer. And that's all I have.
Any questions from councilors? Then I had a single question which I sent to law earlier, um, because I I wanted some clarification. On page three at the bottom, under uh section thirteen, it uh lists the restrictions on advertisements.
Yes, so you found a piece we could have drafted better, Councilwoman. As you'll note there, subsection G is the one item in that list of uh that laundry list of prohibited advertising. Section G is actually allowed advertising. And if we were starting over, we would put that in a separate paragraph. In the interest of full disclosure, we took this from a past agreement. Uh, we will do better next time in terms of how it is organized. So thank you for for your good eye and for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you. I just, it needed to make sense to me. And I know sometimes we read these things not during regular business hours, so I could have been late, but thank you very much.
No, thank you. I read it eight times and missed it, so thank you again.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right. Well, we'll see if anyone from the public has something to say. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this lease, either in support or in opposition? Anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, then we will move ahead.
I'll call item six B and six C together. Item six B and C is approving the conditional change of zone agreement between the city and Larry R. and Freda L. Fif- Fifrelig for the property generally located at eighty-four oh one North Seventieth Street and the related change of zone two four zero one four, application of Larry Fifrelig to change the zone from A G Agriculture District to I one Industrial District on property legally generally located at eighty-four oh one North Seventieth Street.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is Kristy Schroff. I'm appearing for the applicant and the property owners, eighty-four oh one North Seventieth, and my credentials are already signed in. First of all, thank you all for being here on the first Monday after a holiday week. We appreciate it. Um, these two items both have amendments, so I want to call that to your attention, and they're technical amendments, just to correct errors. The main thing and the main reason I want to appear is because this basically goes along with the change of zone that you've already approved recently. And this makes sense just to approve this as well. The technical or the clarification I'd like to make is in the planning report, the summary report, it stated that the um requirement to relinquish access to North Seventieth is what happened when the the surrounding land was developed. That's only partially true. Actually, the triggering event is the change of use of the property. And we understand that this property is grandfathered as residential use for as long as that use continues. But when it changes to I one, should you approve this, then that would be the triggering event for relinquishing the existing access. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that explanation. Um, that makes.
Any questions?
To me. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schroff. Is there any anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? We can move forward.
Next is section seven. I'll call item seven A and seven B together. Item seven A, Street Nally Vacation two three zero zero five, application Wilderness Crossing LLC Kathleen Danker in Lancaster County to vacate a portion of the South First Street right-of-way between Pioneer's Boulevard and Old Cheney Road, adjacent to the property generally located at South First Street and Pioneer's Boulevard. And the related uh First Amendment to the annexation and change of zone agreement for Wilderness Crossing between the city of Lincoln and Wilderness Crossing LLC for the property generally located at forty-seven hundred South First Street.
Good afternoon, Council. Abby Luttrell, City Attorney's Office, five 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 South Tenth Street. Um, as you may recall, this has been before you several weeks ago. We're here for continued public hearing and vote tonight. So I'll just provide a quick kind of refresher and um a short explanation. There's a motion to amend on this, on some legal definitions, and I can kind of walk through what those are. So we are talking about um South First Street, which is south of West Pioneer's Boulevard. This is South First Street as it exists. This is the new South First Street, which was approved in the Wilderness Crossing P U D, so this has long been considered the plan. We were waiting for the new First Street to be constructed before vacating old First Street, so that's what we're here to do. The substitute ordinance that you see, well, is much longer than most of our vacation ordinances because we have several different players here who are um going to be receiving what is left of vacated First Street. So up here is the Wilderness Crossing development. And most of this yellow portion, all of this yellow portion, will go up here. This orange section and this green section, both abut Wilderness Park, which is owned by the county but managed by the city. So the city is just gonna hold on to these two portions. And then the reason for the um kind of more complicated motion to amend is that we have this little tail on either end. I don't know if you can even see them. It's just a tiny little portion here and here that will merge back into the new First Street. So the city will hold on to those two, so they those will remain right-of-way and become part of the new First Street. Clear as mud?
Clear as something, yes.
That's just to make sure that that those little portions remain in a right-of-way status, and they will just become part of the new First Street when the new final plat is filed. And the new final plat is what will establish new First Street. And then down here in the middle, this pink portion is our other applicant for this vacation, and this is Kathleen Danker. Her property is down here, so this pink portion will be deeded to her. And then she will get access to First Street um through a private agreement with Wilderness Crossing LLC. And Danae Calkowski from that organization is here, and she can tell you a little bit more about that um agreement that 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 they have. But that ensures that she's still got access to the road and can get to and from where she needs to go. So after approval of this vacation, then a series of deeds will be executed. That new final plat will be filed, dedicating the road, and um the road layout will be as intended in the P U D.
Any uh questions for Assistant Secretary Luttrell, Attorney Luttrell? City Attorney, you know what? More caffeine.
Abby, it would be fine.
Abby.
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions.
All right, thank you. I don't even know if I should attempt your name.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski appearing today on behalf of Wilderness Crossing LLC. So Abby did a good job just kinda giving you the recap on the vacation. Basically, you're just following through on the agreement that was made back when the P U D was approved, that you would vacate that. And actually, the new street is already in there and constructed, which is why we're finishing up the vacation process here today. But the one thing I just wanted to put back in front of you and remind you, the second part of what you're approving is an amendment to the annexation agreement. And that deals largely with what we're doing with the Danker property. And so Abby mentioned that that thirty-three feet of vacated First Street right-of-way adjacent to Danker will be deeded directly to her. And as part of the final plat that Wilderness Crossing is doing, they will also be basically pulling in Ms. Danker's lot and then adding the area where the driveway will provide her access to the new relocated First Street. And we have an agreement that we will final plat that as one lot and then transfer that back to her. So in essence, Wilderness Crossing is transferring her this piece of property in the middle that will contain the driveway to provide access to her lot. Uh, Wilderness Crossing will also be constructing the driveway, um, doing it with a little bulb, so there's an opportunity to turn around if somebody needed to do it. Uh, by deeding that extra property, it also gives a little bit more area for potential parking spaces there. Uh, and then I think there's also part of that agreement is to provide um within a certain time period, uh sanitary sewer connection to the boundary of her property so that it would be available for her to connect on to and provide service to her property. So that's the second part of what you'd be approving, the vacation request, but also the amendment to the annexation agreement that contains some of those details. And then we also have a private agreement directly with Ms. Danker besides what we have shown in the annexation agreement amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Ma'am.
Ms. Calkowski, could you clarify one point? You mentioned the sanitary sewer connection that would allow Ms. Danker at some point in the future to attach to that if she wanted. Is that going to be in the narrow section of property?
Yeah, I believe I believe it'll come down through there. I think it's even shown on here. It comes from First Street and then right through, and it'll go right to her property lines, so the sanitary sewer service line, right there.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the city council. My name is Kenneth Winston. Um, and I'm appearing on behalf of Kathleen Danker and also on behalf of the Nebraska Sierra Club. I typed up some notes and I tried to print them off, and my printer wouldn't let me me print them. So so I'm trying to remember what I wrote down. Uh, and we'll see how that goes. Well, first of all, the um, I want to indicate that um Ms. Danker um is supports the provision of this that that uh provides that she will receive thirty-three feet in front of her property um as that that will be deeded to her by the city. She also supports the uh the deeding of the lot where the driveway is that that Ms. Calkowski just described. And so she she appreciates that. We also appreciate the fact that we've had good conversations over the past year and a half, or however long it's been, with the developers. So so we appreciate that. However, I I guess I I do feel like I need to talk a little bit about this. This is an issue that's had a troubled history. And um there was, there were contentious hearings or long-drawn-out hearings before the Planning Commission and before this body on the initial application. There was also uh extensive opposition at regarding the street vacation itself at the Planning Commission. And and I don't need to re- to go over all of that. I'm, I mean, I'm sure that some of you, it's seared into your memories, the the kinds of things that you heard and the kinds and kinds of things that that um that people said. But I guess I I just wanted to indicate that it was it was a very traumatic experience for a number of people. I I can't obviously speak for for native people, but I I do want to indicate that I know a number of them felt very, that it that it connected with their generational trauma and their personal traumas, the fact they they felt like they weren't heard in the process. And and I feel like I need to to once again raise that as as an issue that that um, the city of Lincoln does a lot of great things, and I love the city of Lincoln. I love living here, and there's so many great things I could, I could be an ambassador for the city. I mean, just because of all the positive things I have to. But there's some things, th- this was an issue where the city could have done better. And um, and I really feel like there were opportunities to hear, to have those voices be part of the process, and that that could have improved the process, not not just some sort of political correctness or something like that, but rather as an opportunity to learn from different cultures about how we can do things better. And and specifically, when I think about the um, the the Lincoln Climate Action Plan, and that talks about the idea of creating natural climate solutions. And I think there were some opportunities there that were missed in in that process. And perhaps if there'd been conversations with native people in that process, it could have improved the process and improved the development itself. And then I guess one of the other things I wanted to talk about a little bit is um, as I indicated, there um, this was controversial, and it also led to litigation between the uh several parties, including my client and and the and the city. And we're, and we worked out an agreement. And one of the aspects of that agreement, um, there's several aspects of it, but one of the things that people talked about in opposition to the street vacation was the idea of creating a green space in the development that would front the the area where the native sweat lodges are located. And they're located on my client's property. And there is a provision, and I can't quote it, um, I could get you the language, but the the language of the settlement, there was one provision that talked about the city supporting the creation of green space uh if the prop- if the parties were to uh obtain title to 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 real estate in that area. We're still interested in investigating that and and still still interested in looking into that. And whether, and we're not asking anybody to give us anything. Uh, I believe there are people who are interested in in fundraising to help make that happen. And I guess one of the other things about that is parks and green spaces are one of the wonderful things about Lincoln. They're, they create value in and of themselves. I'm sure that any real estate agent will tell you that that a property that's located next to a a park is gonna be worth more money. And so so we'd like to encourage that to happen. We'd like to continue to work with people. And obviously, there are other people, not just me. I mean, as I said, I don't speak for native people, but I I would encourage the the members of this council, members of the city administration to continue to talk to to native people. Now, I I see my time's up. Can I continue?
No, your time is up. If you'd please wrap that up.
Uh, I will, I will, I will wrap it up. I guess I'm, I guess I'm just saying, there is this agreement. We we would like to see continued conversations, that that the conversations continue, that we not uh, that they not be uh subverted or or ended, that that the spirit of that that agreement be carried out. So so thank you for the opportunity to visit with you this afternoon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Winston. All right.
Be glad to. Respond to questions or?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Winston? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilors. I'm Adam Hens, nineteen nineteen Prospect Spree Street. My friend Brendan Evans the other day called me the Lorax of Lincoln, so I'm gonna go ahead and hold on to that. I I am the Executive Director of Friends Wilderness Park. I'm speaking on my own behalf, uh, kind of backing up what Ken just said about how this this development really was a kind of a and a very controversial moment. And, you know, for the past two years, I've really just tried to learn, you know, where where were these problems and how can these things be solved in the future, right? And um, I do think we have learned as a city uh in terms of going to, you know, people in the city have gone to workshops in terms of community engagement and trying to engage the public more. And so that's a really hopeful uh, you know, aspect of of what we've learned as a community with with this development. One thing too that I've I've, we've, we've been working on and kind of worried about for a year now is the stormwater. Unfortunately, the the stormwater requirements for a development are only, are only meant to hold up to one inch of rain. And last year at this time, we got three inches of rain. Recently, we've gotten a lot of rain. And unfortunately, every time it rains more than an inch, we're getting sediment into Wilderness Park. And so I think part of that lesson is these developments don't exist in a vacuum. And when we say yes to something that is gonna give people more homes, and, you know, we're gonna get more neighbors with Wilderness Park out of this, I think we need to look at and work on making sure that our our sensitive areas, ecologically sensitive areas are protected with better stormwater regulations. And so I don't think this conversation's over. I think there's things we can learn from from this whole two-year conversation and move forward as a city and do better for the next development, for the whole community, especially for our amazing parks, like Ken said. They have such a huge value. I would love to live near Wilderness Park. Um, I know there's thousands of people that would love to do that too, and they'd spend extra money for that. But we have to make sure that we're protecting the pink thing we love through our policies. And I just look forward to strengthening those policies, working with developers, and communicating with them because. communicating with them because we're all in this together. And so if we can figure out solutions together, it's going to help that whole process getting to you guys when you can finally vote yes on it. So I have a lot more to say on it. I'm not going to take any more of your time. Benny, if you're watching, happy birthday. And you guys have a good, thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Any approach?
I didn't catch your whole spiel, but, or maybe I did, I wasn't sure. But I am a licensed real estate agent, so those developers that you need to talk to, I might know some of them. So we can get that figured out. That's an easy one.
Are you here to speak to council? Or were you...
To talk to Adam.
You wanted to talk to Adam?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to approach council to speak in support or opposition of this item? All right. Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on this item. Item Seven A, Street and Alley Vacation Two Three Zero Zero Five, Application of Wilderness Crossing LLC Kathleen Danker in Lancaster County to vacate a portion of the South First Street right-of-way between Pioneer's Boulevard and Old Cheney Road adjacent to the property generally located at South First Street and Pioneer's Boulevard introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Weber.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to introduce a motion to amend Number One, to amend Bill Twenty Four Forty Seven, to revise the legal description, to reflect the intent of the city and the property owners. I think there was an error, and it's a meets and bounds description, so I'm not going to read it, but it is in the file there for your review.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Duden, second. Right. So any comments?
I'd like to just make one comment on this. It has been a very long two-year process, or a long two years since this project was moved forward. And as someone who was working hard to see if we could reach, if we could have more time to reach a different settlement, we have gotten to where we have. We've made some progress. And as you both correctly noted, we had an opportunity to learn a lot at the moment and to give ourselves space. And we have a lot left to learn and to improve on so that the next time, we don't end up in this place. You might have noticed earlier in a moment on the watershed master plan that I am still very interested in seeing us work on stormwater best management practices, specifically during construction, specifically adjacent to sensitive natural areas. So I do hope at some point that we can get there so that we can find better ways to address damage to natural resources so it's not happening during construction, which I think is that weak link in our process right now. But thank you so much for everyone who has stayed on this process and watched us and continues to watch what we do going forward.
Madam Clerk, the votes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
The main motion.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Thank you. And we move forward to the last group of ordinances.
Item Seven B is approval of the First Amendment to the Annexation and Change of Zone Agreement for Wilderness Crossing between the City of Lincoln and Wilderness Crossing LLC for the property generally located at Forty Seven Hundred South First Street introduced by Washington.
So moved. Beckius? Second.
Second.
Weber, second, sorry. Any comments, discussion? Let's vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
All right. Now for the last set of ordinances.
Item Eight A is approving the Cornuska Shopping Center lease agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Enterprise Company, Inc., for the lease of space by Health Department Women's Infants and Children's Program at Twenty Six Sixty Two Cornuska Highway, Suite Seven A, from November first, twenty twenty-four through October thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Beckius? Discussion? We'll vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item Eight B is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter A by creating the classifications accounting manager, accountant three and accountant two, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Beckius? Any discussion? We'll vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item Eight C is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter A, by changing the range for Class Eleven Twenty Eight Assistant City Controller from A fourteen to A fifteen and Class Eleven Thirty Nine Assistant City Treasurer from A twelve to A thirteen, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Beckius? Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. Item Eight D is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by the letter M, by changing the pay range for Class Eleven Forty Five Transportation Utilities Business Manager from M zero seven to W zero four, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Beckius? Second. Discussion? We'll take the vote.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. That concludes Section Eight of our agenda. Section Nine is resolutions, first readings, items nine A through nine M. Ordinances, first readings, and related resolutions is Section Ten, items ten A through ten U. And our pending list items is Section Eleven is items eleven A through eleven H.
Madam Chair, make a motion for adjournment.
I think we have open mic.
Nope. Second last meetings of the month.
Second last meetings of the month, so this was incorrectly stated on the agenda tonight.
To clarify, public comment is July fifteenth and July twenty-ninth for this one? Is that correct?
Then I read it wrong.
I just wanted to make sure.
It is the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth. Thank you very much for the correction. We have a motion to adjourn by Beckius. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Weber? Madam Clerk.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
All right. Meetings adjourned.